...here this morning. This will be our commission meeting for the month of June. We will try to get back on our regular schedule, beginning first meeting in July. But this is how we welcome you to the meeting. And we ask Commissioner Wood if he will to lead us in our prayer. And then Commissioner I call it out to Mr. Wood.
President, Father Lord, we bow before this meeting. Thank you and acknowledge you and thank you for all the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us, Lord. We ask your blessings upon us and our country during this time, dear Lord. We pray that you will be with each community and each family, dear Lord. We ask you to be with the ones that are sick, the ones that are our duties to pray for, Lord. Let's hold them up to you, dear Lord, for comfort. Heavenly Father, we ask you just to guide us through this meeting, give us your wisdom. We make the decisions that will be proper for the people that we represent. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Right.
Please place flag. Attention, salute, pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the beloved for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner, please. Again, we thank you for being here this morning. First item of bids approved by Minions from the last eight, I think, Tuesday, Wednesday, tonight. If not, if your motion is approved, this is your second. Your motion accepted in discussion, as Minions favored, making no mistake. Aye, we want those set rejection. Thank you, motion taken. First item is road department update, Mr. Sharp, I believe you have both that and personnel. Do you live in Scottyville, do you have?
I'm going to let Mr. Luther do the update. And as far as personnel goes, Mr. Brode sent me his request to promote Danny Norris to District Three Crew Leader. That's going to be effective, make it effective June one. Promote William Childers to District Two Crew Leader, also effective June one. Hire Drake Casey to fill the vacancy in the unit crew. And then hire Christopher Williams to fill the vacancy in District Three. And I think that's all he had there.
All personnel.
That's it.
Any one have any questions about the recommendation? If not, if your motion that we honor is required, please. Motion seconded in discussion, Minions favored, making no mistake. Aye, we want those set rejection. That's all I can put about that.
Road Department is working, thank you. They are, I know they're continuing to work on a lot of these, these roads we had flooding damage on. I know they've been out on County Road forty-four for a few weeks trying to get those big pipe in. They did get those in at backfield at the end of last week. We're going to kind of do a little concrete work on the end of the end before we finish that up. And then once they do, they'll continue moving around all these other roads that are closed. They're going to require new pipes and some backfield work. So they're, as far as I know, they're continuing to move on that. I believe probably later in the week, they'll try to finish that paving in Buck's Pocket up on Point Rock Road. They did the parking lot last week. So that, that should be done for their opening, grand opening next week. Most that I know of is just them going around, continuing to work on these flooding sites. So, and hopefully within the coming weeks, we'll, we'll find out something on the, on the declaration. I know we, we met threshold, pretty sure the state's met the threshold. So we're just waiting to, to hear from that. So hopefully we'll have some federal assistance to help pay for a lot of these repairs. Otherwise, that's about, about all that I know as far as road department.
Thank you, Mr. Luther. Continue on with your engineer, Adam, please.
The County Road fifty-one award, as part of the, the new rebuild, I, that established a ten million dollar annual grant. It's administered through ALDOT. We made application for that last year and were approved for two hundred fifty thousand dollars. They had limited the project to two hundred fifty thousand, and we did receive that. Thursday last week, we opened bids on that project. This is County Road fifty-one from Highway sixty-eight up to County Road thirty, which is a road to a Cook's plant. This project will tie in the state highway with an A-trail project on fifty-one and an industrial access project on thirty. It's been done over the last few years. This is a relatively short stretch, but it is in pretty rough shape. A lot, a lot of truck traffic. And so it's taking its toll on it. So this will be a, a much better situation from the Cook's plant back out to Highway sixty-eight. Not only for the, the trucks, but also for the employees and, and everybody that, that drives that area. We had two bids, one for recontracting. Their total bid was two hundred twenty-two thousand, four hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. And we had one from Wiregrass. Their bid was two hundred and six thousand, two hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-one cents. It would be my recommendation that we work this contract to Wiregrass.
Thank you, Commissioner. Close any questions. No, I'd like to hear your air.
This is, it's a project, an investigation for a long period of time. But it will make the road management safe with the rednecks and trusses. May that we honor official duty.
Thank you. Motion seconded in discussion, Minions favored, making no mistake. Aye, we want those set rejection. Thank you. Next item is memorandum with the industrial road project in Silvania. With the Estonade project, we, we refunded the funds that are used, Mr. Luther, to afford that.
Yes, the Land Environmental Consultants is the engineer on the project for the town of Silvania. They received some C D B G grant to do this road and a water project for the wholesale sock company that's, at the end of this road. It's about seven hundred eighty-five feet, it's not that long. But they did open bids and it was out of the money, a little too much for them. So Lad came to us and asked if we might could provide some assistance. And myself, Tommy, and Mr. Black met with their engineer and the mayor, looked at it several weeks ago. And kind of came to an agreement on what we would do. And as part of, of what the agreement is saying is that we will provide the labor equipment and materials to reclaim and base that seven hundred eighty-five feet of the road. We will provide about four to six inches of crushed aggregate base to give a little bit of extra width. We will perform some regrading of the drainage ditches. Has a lot of drainage issues to try to improve those conditions. And if that's not enough, then we will do some additional work. Maybe install some additional cross drains, do some additional work to, to help improve that. We estimated the timeframe of one to two weeks. And that all of the combined work that we will do will not exceed ten thousand dollars. So if it's less than ten, we want the invoice what our actual cost is. If it's more than ten, then we'll just eat that difference. But we, we, we will provide this to them for no more than ten thousand dollars. So we had put together memorandum of agreement that we would have on file, letting all of this out in case any questions arise. So I would just ask that the commission agree to our elaborate heart road to sign this memorandum of agreement for this work.
Thank you, questions? Sorry, the, the, in the way? If not, if your motion is required, please. Second, please. Motion seconded in discussion, Minions favored, making no mistake. Aye, we want those set rejection. Thank you. Go ahead, we need to speak into the rest, what you want to talk about.
County Road six seventy-six, Mr. Black had asked me to look at this road of High Point community. There is, has been, and I believe is still active, a, a small coal mining operation off of this road. And a lot of truck traffic through there, I believe, is, is a bit a little too fast and just causes some concerns. It is an unpaved road, and I would request the commission pass a resolution setting that speed limit at twenty-five miles an hour.
Thank you, Mr. Luther. Go ahead, six thirteen.
And the other six thirteen, this is the road that leads down to Minnesota Falls from County Road eighty-nine. Josh Hughes, Park Superintendent, had asked me to take a look at it. It is currently unposted. Of course, there's a lot of traffic through there in the summertime, like right now. A lot of folks are coming through the park, going down there. It is fairly curvy in some areas. And so this is a paved road, and I would also like to set it at twenty-five miles an hour as well. Request a resolution to that effect.
Thank you. Any questions on that one, please? Speaking of that, look, if not, if your motion is required, please. Second, please. Motion seconded in discussion, Minions favored, making no mistake. Aye, we want those set rejection. Vacation request on six twenty-eight.
Back in the late nineties, the Biddles, who lived on the corner of six twenty-eight and six twenty-five, had requested to the county to be able to move this intersection basically from one side of their house over to the other along the property line to get it from coming right out in front of their house. The county did agree to that, and they did provide adhesion and, and moved that road. And the original road was, as far as we know, was never originally vacated. And they had just sold this property to one of their joint landowners down there. And talking with, with their attorney, they're closing, making sure what was County Road, what was not, what was going on with the others, to clean up any potential title issues in the future for her. She has asked that we go ahead and do an official vacation. So what I would like to do is just request from the commission permission to start this vacation process, just to vacate the old right-of-way road. It's, it's just their driveway now, part of the driveway, the road is not there. But that way, we can get this off the books, off the tax map, and have, have a good clean title for her. So all I would like to do is just begin that process.
Thank you, Mr. Luther. Questions? If your motion is required, please. Again, vacation, okay? Second, please. Motion seconded in discussion, Minions favored, making no mistake. Aye, we want those set rejection. The regulations today.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. But thank you, Commissioner, first item, sharp.
And Sheriff's, Sheriff's personnel.
I'm sorry. Sheriff.
In transport, they, they want to hire Carl White to, as transport deputy, replace Stephen Berry, resurrected June first. And these next two are SROs. Josh Wiggly is full-time SRO at the Tax School. And then John Sales is a full-time SRO at Silvania to replace Billy Jack Blackwell. The John Silvania one, that's paid by the Board of Education. Josh Wiggly will be at the Tax School. That is going from a part-time to a full-time position. But Representative Ledbetter got passed Act twenty, twenty dash two oh one. And that's going to divert some funds to us. It will be around eighty thousand. They'll be split between the county, with the sheriff's office for SRO purposes. And about that, about forty thousand to C E D from mental health. The, the part that will be used for the SRO will be used at the Tax School. And what they have, Board of Education has agreed to do is the difference, the difference in the increase from a part-time to a full-time, we're going to split that increase. And so that increase will come out of this funding that we're talking about to the, it's, it go through the Royal Water Authority. And that's now going to come to us. So those, those two, you have any questions about that?
Yeah, would you clarify, is split the fund on that?
It is, right now, it's, it's about eighty thousand. It is a probate judge indexing money that it previously went to Royal Water Authority. And the, the reading of the, of the bill just says that it will be split fifty, fifty. Fifty percent of it will go to C E D. This is going to start effective August the first. And it will be for a mental health officer to be placed into Cav County, to be used for, for the, for the county and, and maybe with the sheriff's office, maybe some other. But it's going to be employed by, by C E D is the way the law was written. The other fifty percent, it says sheriff's office, but it will be, I'm assuming that it's going to come here and be put in the sheriff's office funds to be used for, has to be used for SRO purposes. And so that will be sufficient funding to pay that difference.
This is a constant, a continuous, constant year-to-year amount?
It is, it's a little variable, but average has been seventy to eighty total. So for us, that will be begin thirty-five to forty. It's went, it went below that, it's went above that. So, but I, I think it will be enough to, to cover that, that difference that we're talking about.
One question.
Reasonably, clarification has been quite a bit, quite a bit of questions asked about where the funding for C E D was coming from. And the amount of funding that you have is clarified. And I hope that the media picked up on this, and brought people who have questions about the C E D, mental health, and mental health itself, and know that there's additional funding coming and where it's coming from.
That's, that's been a big priority by Representative Ledbetter, on mental health, and it has been the commission too. So I think it'd be very beneficial. That's on those in the jail. Last meeting, we hired Lindell Elkins. He, he never showed up, so, so they wanted to replace him. And then also they terminated Red Tyson. So they want to hire Stephen Jackson to replace the Lindell Elkins position. Hire Samuel Kalpin to replace, basically that's the John Brown position that was vacated a month or so ago. And then hire Anthony Seenick to replace Red Tyson. So I think that is all the personnel.
All that's ready to use?
It is.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, if your motion is required, please. Second, please. Motion seconded in discussion, Minions favored, making no mistake. Aye, we want those set rejection. Thank you, motion taken.
Training, they have, requested training, you'd have that for David Davis and Michelle Page. And then, then it's items that we budget also for the training for those two investigators, investigator training.
Right. Now, all of their training is necessary, and I suspect that will accelerate.
I, I would say so.
So any questions about training? If not, if your motion is required, please. Second, please. Motion seconded in discussion, Minions favored, making no mistake. Aye, we want those set rejection. At that, quarter bid.
Quarter bid. This is an issue that we've been talking about for some time. The recorder that had dispatch has stopped working some, some time ago. And we've been talking about whether we need to bid it or not bid it. The price on that is about twenty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars. We have Matt Martin at the sheriff's office has found that on state bid. And so they feel like this, this is very important to, to replace that basic equipment for them. And so we recommend we go ahead and purchase this off of state bid.
Any questions? Turn it back. It's no doubt fully necessary, we have to do, but we appreciate your, their diligence and, and safety. Any other questions? If not, if your motion is required, please. Second.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Minions favored, making no mistake. Aye, we want those set rejection. Thank you, motion taken. That'll read the commission, sharp.
Devin Stewart is retiring. She's been the chief manager for quite a while in the Republican office. She will accept her resignation and then will fill that position by Brittany Prove. And then Jason Palmer, he's going to move her from the tax side over to take Brittany's position. And then to post that vacant position, left when Jacey moves over to reapray.
All that ready to use?
It is.
Any questions? If your motion is required, please.
So, Luke, that's our, thanking Miss Stewart for years of service. She's done such a fine job in that position.
Thank you. Motion seconded in discussion, Minions favored, making no mistake. Aye, we want those set rejection. Thank you, motion taken. Uh, the next item is our targets and objectives that we have to do this every year. It hasn't changed, the fact is down just a little from what it has been in the previous year. At least for Val and for our garden community in the, that we employ in Am. So we have to do this every year, and have record of, we're very close to, uh, to a complete exemption. Uh, we, we, second. Any questions about that? If not, if your motion that we grant is intended. Second.
Second.
Second in discussion, Minions favored, making no mistake. Uh, next item is back school sales tax holiday. We always participate in this. It gives parents, those who have children in school, during the coming year, tax rate on certain hours, on every day of certain hours. And we have to do that at this time, get this place to a coincident halt. So is there any questions? I think y'all can do that, but this is formal, but is there any questions concerning that same tax holiday? If not, then your motion, we participate in the program again this year. Second, please. Motion seconded in discussion, Minions favored, making no mistake. Aye, we want those set rejection. Uh, next item is E M A update, as opposed here. So, glad to have you today.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Jim. Ms. Cliff would, would most really be here, but you have circumstances beyond his control, it's time to make the meeting. So we, we want to wish him the best in, in his situation. Uh, also I'd like to provide just a brief update about some of the things going on in the county. I know Mr. Luther provided a, a brief update about the disaster declaration. I've reached out to the state to, to try to get a update or status on where that declaration is at. But unfortunately, right now, they're unable to provide that update. Uh, I know that the February, March disaster declaration took approximately two months to get from the, from the time of the disaster event that didn't involve our county. So I would suspect that we should be hearing some news sometime later on this month. We'll keep you updated as, as much as possible. In fact, I'd like to also, you know, I want to, want to thank each of y'all and the commission, the ladies that, that work here, you know, as we have processed through this COVID stuff, it, it's, it's taken a team effort. We've got, you know, the whole E M A team, Mr. Burke, Mr. Milbrooks, and Mr. Reed, Mr. Cliff, and myself. You know, just because we got a disaster going on, we've got everything else still happening. And it's been, life doesn't stop just because of disasters. And so during this event, during COVID, during, during the severe weather event, we've had, you know, Mr. Reed, Mr. Milbrooks, all working to support operations throughout the county. The E M A office has been supporting the National Park Service in High Falls Park during response efforts. I just spoke with Ms. Chief Ranger Safrida out at the National Park Service. Over the, over the month of May, there were eleven different responses to that park. And many of them involving multiple partners here in the county. Some of those include Fisher Rescue, Fort Payne Fire, Addamsburg, the Cav Island Service, Alton Law Enforcement. And so we've got a, a very good, good partnership with the National Park Service, with Ms. Safrida, with all of those partners I mentioned. And, and Mr. Milbrooks and Mr. Reed have helped support the, Mr. Reed's G I S capabilities of being able to provide data as to where our operations are occurring. Not only with disasters with COVID and severe weather, but also with just operations there, just operations themselves, being able to identify our hotspots that, that we have in, in the county. Also, I'd like to thank all of our task force members, you know, since early March, so going on over three months now, we've been working together with the group that was created to try to manage any impacts that we had from the, the COVID situation and other disasters as, as they have occurred. So lots of, you know, thank each one of them. Every week, up until this past week, we've been having a conference call with those members to try to identify any issues that we may be trying, having here in the county, and try to stay ahead of those issues and prevent us from seeing any kind of neighborhood impacts as we, as some of the other district's in neighboring states have seen. And so far, I'm glad to report that we have been able to do that. The emergency medical services of Ms. Turner and Mr. Haydiddel, the ambulance service, have been able to provide, you know, useful information about call volume, about what their medics are seeing out in the field, out in the county, about what types of calls associated with maybe symptoms that would be identified with COVID or flu-related incidents. And, and so they're constantly providing us with information about how those calls are fluctuating up and down, and what percentage of those calls could be related to maybe a flu-laden symptom that could be COVID or virus-related. Also spoke with the, I spoke with the hospital this morning, and they're, they're also reporting that their numbers are down. A couple of weeks ago, their ICU was actually full, with their reporting that it is down now. They had to actually transfer some folks out a couple of weeks ago to get them to a more appropriate center. But Mr. Trammell and Mr. Wiggins, and there at the hospital, have been very receptive, very helpful in, in reporting that data and a lot of E M A stuff when we're dealing with emergency, emergencies and disasters, is maintaining information management, being able to see something that's coming out before it gets here. And so be able to try to mitigate any issue thereby. And so also, we've been working with our long-term care facilities. I know Mr. Turner C. and Mr. Cooper and Ms. Blackbird at Fort Payne and Collinsville and Crosswood Health here have all been very strategic about working with us and understanding, helping us understand their needs and, and trying to mitigate any impacts that the virus could have on their facilities, because that was one of the higher targeted risk factor ages to be impacted. And we, we actually, you, you may have seen an article earlier this week, I believe, that Collinsville had reported, Collinsville Healthcare reported they had found employees who had tested positive for the virus. Fortunately, due to their mitigation efforts that they had put in place, they were able to protect their residents from being impacted by that. So they haven't had no impact to their residents. So they have had testing procedures put in place to try to mitigate any of the virus being brought in. Because with the current status of not allowing other visitors to come into the facility, your weakest link is your employees, because they're the ones that are coming in and out of facilities. So they were able to mitigate that. All, all the, one of those employees have returned back to work. They are, they are fully recovered. So locally here, over the last fourteen days, we've seen no additional deaths reported. And overall, we've had almost three thousand tests conducted in the county. Statewide, where over that same fourteen days, there's been almost eight-five hundred new cases. In that same time, there's been almost eighty-one thousand tests done. So we're about seven percent test range as far as a positive test resulting from, from COVID. We've got seven hundred and fourteen fatalities statewide. And overall, we've had just under two hundred and sixty-two thousand tests performed in the state. So looking at their data, their numbers still seem to be trending downward. We have had a couple, a little fluctuation since the reopening of the Safer at Home Act. But overall, the numbers are still trending downward. As Mr. Luther reported, we, we do have all of our local assessments have been completed. Combined assessments for state and, and locals have been completed for the Easter storms. And we are just now waiting, kind of in that holding, holding pattern, waiting to see how long it's going to take them to, to get us a declaration. We, we have met our local and, and state thresholds. So it feels certain it's just a time thing now. One other thing is that a couple of weeks ago, we, we, we had these tropical systems now coming through the, through the area the last couple of weeks. And about two weeks ago, we had a, a round of tropical moisture moved to the area. Didn't produce any kind of warnings, didn't produce any type of, uh, why. Didn't produce any kind of warnings, didn't produce any type of, uh, widespread impacts. But it rained really hard in the Hinner, Ider, Savannah area for an hour or so. About an hour and a half later, there was a wall of water went through Buck's Pocket. And they had some volunteers who were, who were in the campground there, uh, doing some work for the state park. Uh, so since that time, Mr. Jefferson, who is the superintendent for Buck's Pocket, has reached out to us and asked us to try to help coordinate, uh, the development of maybe some, uh, measures, mitigation measures that would help, uh, prevent something like that from happening again. Now, we can't prevent the wall of water, obviously, but we can't prevent those volunteers from getting trapped. They were trapped in the campground, watering both sides of them. So if there's something happened, they wouldn't be able to get out for a little while. The good thing about Buck's Pocket is that it, it receives really fast waters, too. Bad thing about it is that they come unexpectedly, and they're usually well, they, they in, uh, they, they, they flood the area, uh, very quickly. Uh, so in an effort to try to, uh, mitigate some of that, provide some extra warning, we've utilizing the, uh, mass notification system that the county purchased at Everbridge. We're able to set up some, uh, waypoints throughout the county, mainly along, uh, and north of Buck's Pocket on Santa Mountain, where Salt Creek, uh, watershed is. And so we're in a, we're in a process of testing this, uh, beta testing it with the national, with the, uh, state park and some of our employees here at the county. And, uh, we're going to see if our mass notification system with the National Weather Service, when they, uh, we see high rainfall in those particular areas that may impact Salt Creek, if it will, uh, set up a, uh, a form of notification so that we can at least try to give some warning about the potential for, uh, flash flooding in Buck's Pocket, prevent or try to mitigate any kind of impacts to people who may be staying at the campground. And also provide us as, uh, as the emergency managers, law enforcement, and then the park service to try to provide us with some, uh, time to maybe close the gates once they're put up to prevent people from getting across that bridge and getting swept downstream, resulting in some of the bad issues we've seen in the last couple of years. Sorry I took so long, sir. Uh, that, that is my report for anything I can answer for you.
Hey, Michael. I'm calling you, you all, uh, thank you for the job and the lack. And we appreciate that all the work getting our figures, numbers together, getting our decorations in place. And, uh, the process of mitigation that's also of the agencies and. Let me just say something about Mr. Reed's operation and that GIS, that, that's amazing system. I know we needed some information the other day, you know, on just some statistics that nobody had. I mean, he came up with this like that. Uh, and so it's things like that, that, that you all do, that, that you all have, that, that we don't have. And we're just thankful that you're here to do it. And again, I mean, I mean, just to give this report back to the question, that he has encounters, uh, difficult, his, his belongings. And, uh, we, we remember him, uh, in, today's, uh, uh, correct? I think this day started on a few series of dedication, and so we will remember him. But, uh, we thank you for being here today, and, and, uh, all of you on staff, you did such a, such a good job. And to gentlemen, I can relate to, back in comment or asking for it.
I would say, first of all, also, I'm pleased to relay our thoughts and our feelings, Williams, Cliff, and my prayers, allowing them. Uh, thank you for what you do, the updates that you've been sending us and giving us for the last, uh, two and a half months. It's really been useful and helpful. I appreciate the job that you all have done. Larry, it's encouraging to see that COVID numbers are kind of trending down. Uh, we were all hoping to see that, and it's, it's really good to see that with, uh, with the economy and everything open and back up. Now, we did have some concerns there for a little while, when first opened back up, with ICUs filled up. But, uh, it's really a good use of, to hear that, that that's coming down. It's, uh, important, these updates, and, and you mentioned about taking as long as updates. But that's fine, it's important for the public to understand, uh, and, and to hear from officials and, and local officials, I think, of, of what's going on. And especially for the public, I think, that we have people here working on this and keeping an eye on, I think, whether it's COVID or, or the water situation, or these, uh, other emergency situations, uh, that, that come up. So thank you all for what you do. Please reiterate that, um, that we, uh, that we'll be thankful, Mr. Cliff.
Thank you.
Scott. Like three divisions, two problems that we're in the county are always with us from the schoolway. I always have to be ready for them. Especially with the COVID situation, this is a sort of kind of situation, because that's my children. And they need to be very conscious, be very careful, and think ahead, be reasonably safe, take care of yourselves. And, uh, just be cautious, uh, if something go on in the neighborhood, learn the trap, and, 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 and. Thank you for the organization that provides the support to the citizens of this county. And thank you for your support to the organization, similar views, uh, throughout the state. It's very important that, uh, we all work together through all of these various processes. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we do what we can to.
Uh, yeah, I think, in fact, Mr. Fox, this is not just an eight-hour job, they just, uh, it's twenty-four-seven. Thank you for that work. And, uh, for Sky Dollar's, what was, uh, Westbrook's track, and all those fantastic jobs. It's worked amazingly, it's worked for them. I couldn't ask for, um, anything better than this cooperation force that they all, but I, I thank them for that. So, uh, again, we thank you, Mr. Fox, and, uh, we wish less of what we've been, uh, helped to keep. Back to closing our agenda for the day. Uh, our next meeting will be July fourteenth, here in the chamber. We'll try to get back on our regular schedule then, if our numbers keep declining, as he was talking about. Uh, we'll try to get back on our regular schedule then. Uh, and, uh, we thank our staff, who have been here every day in charge of, of, and deep thanks, Ryan. Though we, uh, had to be closed down in a lot of areas, the office never stopped. Uh, we had to take certain precautions and, uh, do everything we could, but fortunately, we come out on top of that. And our operations have, uh, not been altered at all. So I thank our staff and all of the work that we've here. Again, our next meeting will be here July fourteenth. That concludes our agenda, your motion, your journey.
Go ahead.
In objects and so on.